We've met a lot of people.
Are they just very similar?
Yeah, I'd like to call Monday, May 20th, 2024, City Council meeting order at 7:02 PM. If you would stand, glad to believe you. Okay, real call. All six of us are present. Marissa Jacobs is online. We had we have one application that we were going to review still to go. We could do it. We're going to do it after the approval agenda. We need to make that motion to add to the agenda. Or we can do it now before we start the meeting.
That we don't think we can now.
You got, you got to go. Sorry.
Just saying, it's, you got Bill either way. He's hanging out.
Okay, Bill, why don't you go ahead and let's do your presentation and we'll get this.
Yeah.
Like to
Sure.
Scappus Community Club, CEP application, if you'd like to go ahead and give your presentation and then we can talk about it later.
Sure, if you have that in front of you, I'm sure you do. We, the Scappus Community Club, first of all, I want to thank you for even accepting or looking at this, considering it. Also that there are many, several, I was just listening, how many organizations that are out there that are really worthy and deserving. What we wanted to do here with our application from the community club this year is expand on what we started, which was music and the farmer's market. We have a lot of people from the community enjoy it and when we got out of COVID or out of the pandemic era, we had cut it off. We're just basically getting it back. We brought in a little bit last year. Want to enhance that again, bring more if we can, then we'll go from there. And if we have to make some improvements for the musicians, equipment, stuff like that, we want to be able to do that too. So basically, we were asking 2,000 on our application. And we have already budgeted ourselves about 11,500, I think it was, or something like that. So the thing is, what we want to do is ask for you to give that consideration. And that's it.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Now looking at our agenda, looking for motion to agenda.
So motioned.
Okay. Miller, any discussion? None, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you have any public comment, Susan? Okay, before we would bring up public comment, so we'll see none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we're looking at April 15, 2024, City Council meeting minutes and May 6, 2024, City Council work session minutes and May 6, 2024, City Council meeting minutes. Looking for someone to make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Miller.
I move the council to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Makes a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any seconds? Second by Councilor Holmes. Any discussion? None, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Hey, tonight, I do have one proclamation. I will go ahead and read it. We have the, I hope I pronounced it correctly, Amyotrophic Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month. Whereas Amyotrophic Lateral Sclerosis, here now being ALS, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with the muscles, only taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS. Whereas on average, patients diagnosed with ALS only survive two to five years from the time of diagnosis. Whereas ALS has no cure. Whereas people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. Where securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. And whereas clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge through a renewed commitment to galvanize public awareness and support funding leading to significant investments in ALS research. Whereas the ALS Association, as the largest philanthropic under of ALS research globally, has committed over 154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and 18 other countries. Whereas our commitment to accelerating the pace of discovery means unwavering fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until we can cure it. Whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public awareness of the people with ALS dire circumstances and acknowledges the terrible impacts this disease have, not only with the person on, but on his family or her family in the community and recognizes the research being done to eradicate the disease. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Backus, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 is ALS Awareness Month. I call upon all Americans to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. Witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed down at the City Hall in the City of Scappus, Oregon, on this 20th day of May, 2024. Okay, today we are joined by Planning Commission Chair Scott Jensen, Vice Chair Bill Blenk, Rita Bernhardt. Harlow Vernwald is online, Marty Markey is here, and Sarah Jones Graham are joining us to go over a land use training exercise. Met the right place. Today, we are joined by Ashley Dugill. There you are, who will lead us in this exercise.
The attorney.
Idiot. The attorney, Ashley Dugill. Take it away.
Thank you. I'll take this one. Thanks, Larry. Well, Lori's setting that up. I'll just, is that turned on? Can you all hear me all right?
I can hear you.
But I guess there is.
Can you hear me now?
Marissa, can you hear her okay?
Great. Okay. Wonderful. Well, for those of you who I've not met in person, my name is Ashley Dugill. It is nice to meet you all. I am one of two Ashleys that help represent the city. The other Ashley handles primarily employment law. And I handle cities' public contracting and land use issues, and we jointly handle the rest of your questions. We did provide a training for you all on land use. I believe Josh Soper, who is another land use attorney in our office, provided that for you last year. Maybe a little bit earlier, but around March or so, I believe. And so there's a few updates that I wanted to provide for you. And then, of course, since there are a number of new faces here, also just provide you with a refresher. So that will be the scope and topic of my presentation today.
They're working on something, Marissa.
Apologies, just give me, bear with me just for one moment. You. Great. All right, we're all set. So this is just an agenda for today. I'll first be providing a brief refresher on some just land use basics. The role of state and cities and various types of land use decisions, including primarily legislative and quasi judicial, which are the ones that are the most important for your role as public officials. Important issues to consider. These are a few of the main ones that you will see before you when you're making land use decisions. And then provide some time for questions and also some valuable resources. If you do have questions, there have been a number of land use updates, so I have some notes here that I can try to answer for you all. But there was a large, large bill, multiple bills this session. So I would advise you to turn to the League of Oregon Cities Updates or summaries there. But I can provide you with a brief overview as well, if you're interested in that. So first of all, a brief history and purpose of Oregon land use. So last year marked the 50th anniversary of land use as we know it, basically in Oregon. Land use law in Oregon originated with Senate Bill 100, which was adopted in 1973. And at that time, they were primarily concerned with protecting farm and forest lands and preventing urban sprawl. Those ideas are still foundational and land use today, but it has grown and kind of morphed into something more and something new since then. Ultimately, the purpose is to manage land uses to achieve a variety of competing and complementary goals, both on a state and local level. So in this, you have an interplay of state and local rules, responsibilities, and regulations. On a state level, you have 19 statewide planning goals. These include natural resources, housing, economic development, transportation, and more. And the goals do express the state's policies on land use and related topics. Most goals are accomplished or accompanied by guidelines, which are suggestions about how a goal may be applied. These are implemented through state statutes and administrative rules and accomplished through DLCD, which is governed by LCDC on a state level. Quasi judicial, the entity that is in charge of appeals on the quasi judicial side of this is Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Sure. Do you have LCDC or one of them coming to speak? Did you bring that up? Lori, are we having a meeting with them later in the year or?
Yeah, they did reach out to us. Yeah. And I know they've been kind of making the rounds a bit, providing legislative updates because there was such a large number of changes in this past legislative session. So I've seen in a number of other cities, they have provided those summary. So on a local level, cities are required to abide by these planning goals and to abide by the statutory procedural requirements and other requirements for implementing these goals. You do this first and foremost through your comprehensive plan, which provides your MAPS policy and ultimately your vision of how you're going to implement those planning goals. The more of the details of that are implemented through ordinances. And those are kind of the code for your land use. And then ultimately, you review, you as a city council and you as a planning commission will review development applications for compliance with local and state regulations. So there's that constant interplay between both. So moving on, there are two main types of land use decisions that you will see. Those are legislative and quasi judicial. And simplified, a land use decision involves a final decision or determination that is made by a city and that concerns the adopting, amending, or applying of statewide planning goals, comp plan, or comprehensive plan for vision or local land use regulations. So there are many exceptions to this, but we will just basically be focusing on the two main types that you see in most of your land use practice, which are legislative and quasi judicial, and the differences between those two. So first, legislative decisions. So legislative decisions usually involve an adoption of more generally applicable policies, standards, et cetera, that apply to a variety of factual situations and a broad class of people. So it can be citywide, it can be region wide, et cetera, but it's not a specialized or specific decision. Examples can include amending the comp plan, zone change that applies broadly to large areas. Changes to the text of the development code are considered legislative decisions. Or zoning, uses in a specific zoning classification. And because a legislative decision is an expression of city policy, you are not required to reach a final decision and you may table the issue or decline to review it altogether. In addition, your own personal opinions and your view, your more kind of nebulous ideas for goals for the city can apply when you're making these decisions. So the additional requirements and restrictions of bias and ex parte requirements do not apply when you're making those kinds of decisions. It's more similar to how you typically act in your role as a council. And I'm sure you're all familiar with that as well as commissioners. In contrast, to legislative decisions, you have quasi judicial decisions. Quasi judicial versus legislative, the real difference between these two comes out of this landmark case, Strawberry Hill Four Wheelers. And that is from 1979. That case actually establishes a three factor test for deciding when you have a quasi judicial versus a legislative decision. And so when you're determining whether it's, whether it is actually a quasi judicial decision, you look at if the application involves a single property or a small group of properties. A decision on the application is based on preexisting criteria. And the city is required to make a decision on the matter. And if you have those three things, then it is quasi judicial. And you must abide by additional requirements. Most of the decisions that come before you are in fact quasi judicial. And the focus in that, again, is on judicial, that word there. You are acting essentially as judges. You're acting in a quasi judicial capacity. So you are being requested to be a neutral decision maker. You know, you're being requested to look at the evidence and the criteria that is before you and make a final decision based on the application. And so now I'm going to go through a few additional issues or requirements that apply specifically in the context of quasi judicial land use decision making. The first of these is the legal concept of bias, which is different from your, you know, kind of layman's standard idea of bias being this, you know, what it means in like day to day speak. There is a different definition when we're talking about legal bias. So legal bias exists if the decision was the product of positive or negative bias rather than independent review of the facts and law. So that's still pretty broad. Basically, it's a very fact specific determination. And a court, Luba, will look at all the facts and circumstances to determine bias rather than your own personal mindset. They look at the, all the facts in the record coming together. Does that determine, does that show that you may have prejudged the application before you were provided with the facts and before you were provided with the standards? And that you were not able to reach a decision based on the evidence in the record. So to illustrate this, because it is really fact specific, I just have a few examples that I'm going to walk you all through. Some where Luba did find bias and some where Luba did not find bias. But in each of these, there was sufficient evidence of bias for it to in fact be appealed to Luba. So in each of these, the city or the local public entity did in fact have to defend this before Luba, and then some prevailed, some did not. So this first example, Halverson Mason Court, this is from 2001. And prior to a final decision, a city councillor sent a letter to the mayor and other councillors concluding that the applicant did not have the right to use the proposed structure for the proposed use. So in this case, the councillor clearly had prejudged the application. They sent a letter before they had even seen the facts, before they had seen the criteria to councillors and the mayor about their personal opinion regarding the application. So in this case, Luba held that the city councillor had in fact formed an opinion regarding the legality of the real estate sales office prior to receiving evidence. And therefore, it was clear that the councillor had in fact prejudged the application and was incapable of rendering an impartial decision.
That's a quick question.
Yeah.
The situation of the person who brought the facts, put it something wrong code or something like that, that would have changed maybe that decision?
Potentially. It would, I'm, it would probably have to be a little bit more specific for me to answer that. If you are prejudging an application before you have seen any of the facts on it or before you have been given any of the relevant criteria, that is essentially what we're talking about here. Before you have learned the full scope of or who are predetermining, you're basically, you've kind of made up your mind already. But you're saying if, if you're instead.
Did a little study, they knew what they were looking at, they ready to prepare to fight because they had some facts. Would change a little bit on how they judged it, even though they may have something. Okay, they don't have the right.
It would probably, again, unfortunately, be kind of fact specific, right? Because you're saying if you had facts in advance, but what facts? Facts that are in the record, facts as in, you know, the criteria that you're making this final decision on? Or facts as in, you know, circumstances outside of the record? It would, as long as it was contained to the record, it was your actual criteria by which you would make your final decision, then yes, that, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Can I follow up just real quick? So it sounds like it needs, this evidence needs to be on public record.
Very much so.
Okay.
For many reasons. It's always good to keep any evidence in the public record going through a land use.
Because it says, yeah, during the course of the city council proceedings. So it doesn't matter if you get your facts outside of the proceedings. It's not on the record, doesn't matter.
That's why I'm kind of hesitating because every, all the information that you're making your final decision on should be in the record. You should not be making decisions based off of evidence outside of the record. Any info that you are considering should be entered into the record. Okay.
Real quick, when it says prior to decision, is that like a final decision or the original decision? Because if it does get appealed, it's not final decision yet. So even after a decision is made, you, you have to be careful in case it comes back at a later time.
It's a great point. And I do bring that up in a later part of the presentation, but it's a really good point to make. You can have bias at any stage in the proceedings. So you can have bias if you, if you really, if you still aren't the final decision maker and it's appealed to at another level, on a local level. You can have bias at, you know, even if it's not identified at an initial stage, but it's appealed and then remanded back to you to make a final decision. You could still be considered biased from all the facts and circumstances, or at least have the appearance of bias, which is really enough to bring a lawsuit. So yes, that's a really good point. There's many different ways that bias can trip you up, unfortunately.
I have a question just to follow along with one of the commissioners. When we talk about evidence within the record, does, that also includes public comment? When land use cases are coming before and there's public comment? That public comment, can you please clarify, is that considered evidence on the record? Or how is that determined?
Yes.
How is that categorized?
Yes, that's, that's all part of the record. All of that's part of the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
No problem. All right. So moving on to my second example, this is Woodard v Cottage Grove. And so in this case, a city councillor signed a letter to the editor of a newspaper encouraging a project opponent to leave town. They also requested police logs regarding project opponents and included them into the record. So in this case, there was clear evidence of what Luba calls animus, which means you just, you were clearly opposed generally in your actions towards this decision. And Luba stated that the role of the local government decision maker is not to develop evidence yourself, but instead to impartially consider the evidence that the participants and city planning staff submit in the course of public proceedings. But because there was this animus and because they were, you know, going out of their way to introduce these other pieces of evidence, the Luba, looking at all of the facts as a whole, determined that they were in fact biased. And just to be clear, in both these circumstances where Luba determined biased, the result is that the decision was invalidated and therefore reversed. So basically, the local decision maker had to start over. Third example, this is Friends of Jacksonville. And so in this case, the city councillor was a member of a church that applied for a CUP, a conditional use permit. They had expressed concerns about conditions that were imposed on the church, but they ultimately voted to approve the permit. There was a bias claim because they were a member of that church and they ultimately did vote to approve. However, Luba looked at all the facts in the case, all the facts. They decided that just that individual statement, the concern about the conditions, but nevertheless, the fact that she was, that this person was able to state that they would be able to make an impartial decision, that they had not impermissively prejudged the application. So when the record as a whole supports or does not support a bias claim, you may further strengthen your position as being unbiased by declaring that you are able to render an impartial decision. That is specifically where, you know, the facts already are on your side. And so my final example. In this case, a petitioner challenged a city decision to approve a plan amendment, zone change, and master plan. And during deliberations, a city councillor made a reference to the acronym BANANA, which means build absolutely nothing anywhere near anything. And so Luba heard this case after it was appealed on bias. And Luba determined that just that acronym, that individual statement standing alone without any other statements or any other facts or records or evidence from that councillor was not sufficient to prove bias. So again, that just goes to show that Luba does look at the facts as a whole when determining bias and they will weigh those facts pro and con, for and against an individual's bias.
Question.
Yeah.
This petitioner challenged city decision to approve plan amendment, zone change, and master plan. Does that sounds more legislative, like it's a big plan. Is that a local, independent development? Or could that have been in legislation?
There were probably pieces of both. So often, you know, if there's a big development, you can have updates to your master plan or a required zone change as a piece of that, right? But yeah, that's a good call out. It was probably a large, like planned unit development or something along those lines. I don't recall exactly what it was in this case.
Quick question. What is Luba?
It's the Land Use Board of Appeals. Sorry for not clarifying that. That's the main quasi judicial. It's a board, a three panel board that hears appeals from local decision makers. So there's some just notes on bias in practice. So I already mentioned the common meaning versus the legal term that can, you know, often trip people up. It is really looking. It is really looking at the entire facts of the situation and the appearance of bias, rather than the actual personal feelings of an individual decision maker that can prove bias. Courts will in fact look at the record as a whole when determining bias, rather than an individual decision maker's personal mindset. Because again, unfortunately, they can't read your mind, so they did not, they do not know how you were feeling in the moment. They can only look at the facts presented to them. Right. Moving on to another specific issue only for land use decisions, which is ex parte contacts. Oh, yep, I see that.
Sorry. Thanks. Before we move on to ex parte contacts, just to go back regarding bias, just to get more clarity. Earlier, I'd asked about public comment as part of the record as evidence. Just want to get clarity, when we talk about public comment, does it have to be specific within the hearing? Or can it be anything outside of that hearing? And someone comes to a council meeting and gives public comment, is that then considered evidence on the record?
So it depends on the identified process for the specific decision. So sometimes there's a time before a public hearing where a public comment can be introduced. Usually, it's not kind of like a cross thing between a city council meeting, for example, and a public hearing. Usually, there's like a set period of time where public comments may be introduced in its written testimony. There's also a set period of time where both proponents and opponents, people for and against a local decision, may speak their minds and voice their opinions on the matter. So in those ways, you know, it is kind of clear-cut of how evident is those, those opinions or those testimonies are introduced into the record.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Senator Santiago?
I have a clarification.
Yeah.
You can hear me better. So just to clarify, you said earlier, it can perceive to be biased. But I think you gave an example of, in that case, I think the councillor, your example, I forget what case, stated that they have no bias and put that in record. And so the Luba, I'm not sure, took that into consideration?
They did, yes. So in that particular case, there was no additional evidence one way or the other. So they had only made that, the only factor not in their favor, the only factor leaning towards bias was the fact that they were a member of that church. So they, so Luba took that one factor into consideration, the fact that they were a member of the church, and the fact that the council member made that affirmative statement that they could still make an impartial decision. They weighed those two factors and ultimately concluded that the person had acted in an unbiased way. Where there's other facts and circumstances, that's why bias is such a fact-specific issue. It really truly just depends on the individual circumstances of a particular matter. And if there's an appearance of bias, again, unfortunately, just to bring a claim, it is a much lower bar than what would actually prevail before Luba. All right. So moving on to ex parte contacts. So this is, like I said, the second main legal issue that you see specifically in quasi-judicial land use decisions that does not apply to general public meetings. So for ex parte contacts, these are defined as communication or information that is received outside of the record on a matter that is pending for the city. So that can include many different communications, all communication or information, including site visits. So it is, it happened, yeah, go ahead.
Is there a distinction between site visits, being on the site, walking around, and going to the site and looking from the public right-of-way?
I think err on the side of over-disclosure. So if you have gone out of your way to look at the site from the public right-of-way, I would still, that could, you know, there's, there's at least a question there, so it doesn't hurt to disclose it. So the requirement here, the, the way to make this okay is just to disclose and to allow the public time to comment. So I think in a situation where you were simply viewing from the right-of-way, I don't think many members of the public would see that favorably.
Is it, this sort of sounds like it gets into just doing research in general on these things? Like, are you supposed to disclose if you've researched something that's pending?
So it's really just, it's primarily information received. So if you are passively, you know, if you're, if you're doing your own research and you're reading websites and things like that, that's not a contact with another individual. It's if you're communicating with a third party that's not already in the record. If you're, if someone's sending you, like, let's say they emailed you a blurb or further information on a particular decision, but that is not entered directly into the record already, those are the sort of things that would be considered ex parte contacts and that you should disclose.
Can you, Mike, sorry Rita.
Sorry.
This community is small and just going to the grocery store, I can't tell you how many times that people to me throughout the years about city or county stuff. So it happens. So I think you have to try to, I just, I've always just said, I've seen talk to me about blah.
Yep, that is perfect. So yeah, that's a perfect example, right? Ex parte contacts happen, and especially in a small town, you know, you can't help but sometimes run into somebody at the grocery store, right? But when that happens, don't despair. All you have to do is be sure that you disclose before the public hearing begins, the substance of the communication, that's key, not just the fact that it happened, but actually specifically what you talked about. And put that on the record and then allow an opportunity for any interested parties to respond. And as long as you do that, then you have met your ex parte contact requirements.
So kind of when does the clock start ticking on this? Like, you know, as Rita mentioned, we all live in a small town, we've had years and years of contact with each other. Like, how far back are we supposed to be going and accounting for?
Yeah, as long as the matter is pending. So from the point that it commences until it is finally decided, which includes all appeals.
Well, if I'm talking about something that hasn't even started, happened yet, talking about, then it doesn't matter.
That is not, yeah, that is not formally commenced before, that is not, it has not formally commenced the land use decision-making process at that time.
I was gonna say, another follow-up on that is if it's with Lori and team, does that count for us? Because it's not necessarily even presented to us when you all are working on it. Like, is it once we have an official on the docket or, yeah, like, when, when does that start taking place?
It starts upon the, the point in time when the, the rule I always use is when the, when the decision is, like, when the 120-day clock starts. So when the, exactly.
Okay. So when they're doing application discovery or working with you on-
When the application is incomplete and you're still trying to find more information, that, that person could still walk away, right? They could, they could make a decision not to move forward. But once the application is complete, that clock is rolling, the process has started. And to your point about internal communications, there is an exception to that, communications with staff is fine.
Okay, yeah.
And also communications before the application is submitted, like you said, and after the final decision. So to the mayor's point, it's really important to keep in mind those appeals, right? And the times when there's remands, because remands can take years, potentially. And while that matter is still pending before the city, meaning there's not been a final decision made one way or the other, any contact outside of the record is considered an ex parte contact. And that matter on remand may come before you yet again, and you may have to discuss and consider bias. You may also have to list out every single time you had an ex parte contact, every single substance of each of those communications, or else you're not meeting your requirement. So this is just a quick note on attorney-client privilege. So I think this is important to note just because during land use proceedings, attorney, your attorney works closely with staff and individual decision makers. You know, land use can be litigious, it's important to follow procedure. I'll be giving you advice a lot of the time that is considered privileged. Attorney-client privilege is a special privilege of confidentiality that is between the city and your attorney. Though that privilege does extend to staff, it does extend to individual council members, planning commissioners, et cetera. And it can only be broken or waived in certain particular circumstances, including when the city voluntarily chooses to give up that privilege or provide that information to an individual. But that is the city's right to give. That is not an individual staff or council or planning commissioners' right to give up. If you are speaking without the authority of the entire, your entire body, then you're acting beyond your authority. So that's just like any other matter, right? Anytime you're speaking in public on councillor or your commission's behalf, you need to be acting as a whole. So you're either advocating on their behalf, or you have to specify that you're speaking as an individual, rather than as a member of your body. So when you are, or if, in the event that you inadvertently do waive attorney-client privilege, you are in fact acting beyond the scope of your authority. And in that case, liability for that can be personal, which means you waive your right to indemnification for torts claims. You do, and also if there is some sort of harm to the city through that waiver, the city can personally pursue damages against you. So it's a really important thing to remember that when you see an email from any of the attorneys that has that attorney-client privilege, do not forward, do not reply all, et cetera. It's really important to try to keep that privilege, keep that within the city, keep that within your, your team, basically.
That's a quick question.
Yeah.
What about people who are serving as a PR, planning commissioner, or council member, or whatever? We leave that city service, what happens then? When they still come back to us?
And-
Once we step down from wherever it is, whether or not elected, or stepped down?
So that material is still the city's, right? And that information, that advice that was given was provided to you as you were acting on behalf of the city, right? So your ability to talk about that is not waived by the fact of you leaving. It's waived, again, if the city chooses to waive it, or if a matter just through its nature becomes public, right? Some matters start out privileged and then over time, that privilege doesn't quite matter anymore. It's entered into a public record, something else happens, et cetera. So if one of those things does not happen, then you're, you still don't have a right to disclose that information as much as you would any other privileged material.
All right.
All right. So moving on, these are things that apply to you all, but they also apply just in general to public meetings. So it's just good to keep in mind, anytime you are meeting as a public body in the public eye, these apply, including when you're making land use decisions. So the first one, oh, and another important note is that unlike bias and ex parte contacts, which specifically can result in invalidating a local, the city's decision, so it has a citywide impact, these are personal liability, which means if you inadvertently violate one of these requirements, these ethics requirements, it is personal liability for you all. So that could be a fine, that could be something else, a letter of reprimand, et cetera. And if you have any questions about that, you can always contact the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, which is a great resource, they're always available to help. You can proactively call them, it's free. You can get a legal opinion on a particular situation that you're in, and again, that's free of charge. So the first matter here is actual and potential conflicts of interest. An actual conflict exists where a decision will result in a private financial benefit or detriment to you, to your relatives, to your household, or to any business with which you are associated. So those have specific definitions in statute, but basically, I mean, they, they are what they sound like. And a potential conflict exists where a decision may result in a private financial benefit detriment. So the key difference there is if the decision will actually result or it may result.
I agree. I mean, I kind of was thinking over this, looking at this, I mean, every decision I make is gonna affect me, my property, whether I change a zoning over there, over there. It's gonna affect, or may result, you know, in a, in a benefit. But do they take that in consideration? I mean, every decision they make or, or, could result in a detriment, it could increase our cost of something, but that isn't as direct as like, we're issuing a zoning change to my brother's company, and I know he's gonna result, you know, benefit immediately, but-
It's a hypothetical situation.
I don't have any brothers.
I, I got him up here, Ashley.
Yeah.
I mean, as I'm thinking through, every, a zone change, that could affect me, you know, down the road. I mean, maybe not day, but it, does that matter?
You know, you have some discretion here, right? And it's, I always say err on the side of caution, but if you have individual, it's really common sense to a certain extent. If you think, if you start thinking too far into the future, too nebulous, then it's probably not necessary. But where the may comes in most often is where something is proceeding along a path and you're at an early stage in the deliberations before you reach that final decision. And the example that I'm most familiar with, I always give, is not in the land use context, but it's in the contracting context, where, you know, a city is going out to bid, and there are multiple entities available, and one of them is your relative. That end decision could result in a, a private financial benefit or detriment, but you're not quite sure who is gonna receive that bid. So-
It's like example, then if we're changing zoning so they can build a school, well, my wife's a teacher. She could benefit if that new school happens to be her grade and she gets a job there. She already has a job teaching somewhere else, but that's kind of nebulous, that's too far out there to really be-
I don't want to say, I don't want to give you a definitive answer, but, but yes, I would generally think that would be a little too nebulous. But if you have specific concerns, because it is better to be cautious, you can always ask O G E C. And they'll just give you an answer, right, a definitive recommendation.
Is there, I was thinking too, if I'm trying to make a decision and there could be a conflict, is, can I not listen to the case? And if I decide against my benefit, then I should be able to vote? If it is gonna be a detriment to me, detriment, can you listen to it and then say, woo, this is gonna be a benefit? I'm now gonna pull out? Or do you have to pull out even before the case starts?
So it depends on if it's actual or potential. If it's an act, if it's a potential conflict, all you have to do the entire time is simply announce that there might be a conflict. That's it. You don't have to do anything else, you can still participate. But you do have to announce it every time. So if there's multiple meetings on a matter, you have to announce it every single time you have deliberations on that. However, if there's an actual conflict, which is a lot more straightforward, then you have to recuse yourself. But if there's a potential, you still are definitely allowed to participate.
If I think I have a conflict, I call the Ethics Commission, and they say, no, you don't. Am I, am I home free?
You are definitely more protected. I don't want to say that you are home free.
Do I get that in writing from them, or?
You can seek an official opinion, an official legal opinion from the O G E C. And if you do that, I would say that that is pretty close to binding.
I don't think they'll do hypotheticals, though. It has to be, like, you'd say, no, that is not a ethics violation, then you're probably okay.
You can call them and present hypotheticals, or email them and present hypotheticals. But if you're seeking of an official opinion, that is not hypothetical.
It also suggests that when you're talking about that kind of global nature, that's the ethics filing you do every year. That's covering all that kind of broad, how might this populate out, you know, six, seven steps away?
That's a good point.
That's exactly what that's for. It's, you're, you're announcing, I own this piece of property here, so.
FYI.
Yeah.
And I just note as well, as a best practice, it's good if you do have an actual conflict to leave the room. Yes, that's not a requirement, but it is good just for appearances.
I was just gonna say, throughout the years, I've just always felt like that if there is a possibility that I may have a conflict, it's probably better if I just recuse myself, and I've done that before. Even after, you know, having a consulting with our staff and so on, I've just found for myself personally- Even after, you know, having a consulting with our staff and so on, I've just found for myself personally that I feel better by knowing that I'm not taking a chance in putting anybody at risk, whether it be the city or my family or whatever. So, you know, I think common sense does enter into this a lot, but you can always recuse yourself. I mean, as a last resort, just say, you know, I'm not gonna participate in this discussion, either leave the room or, you know, that's what I do. I just don't, I just don't. I, for me personally, it's always works.
Yeah. And I mean, I think that's a great rule of thumb. Everybody operates a little differently. And I think that's like a little bit more of a conservative approach and I, I like it, you know? It's good to err on the side of caution. And like you said, it never hurts to recuse yourself, right?
Especially when you've got a body of folks that are making decisions, it's not like you're just.
And there's a difference between actual legal definition of conflicts, kind of like with bias, right? And the appearance of a conflict. So, you know, sometimes you all are much better judged than I am on the politics of that. But that is definitely an important consideration when you're acting.
If I recall correctly, I'm an actual certified planner, so that's why I know some of these things. There's actually mechanisms to recognize small towns and having to meet quorums. There is some, some flexibility there, even if you do have a conflict of interest, because you still have to do the business of city. And I don't remember the details of it, but it's recognized that that's gonna happen in small towns.
Yeah. So many of those circumstances apply if, for example, you do not have enough individual decision makers to actually have a quorum, for example, right? So if enough of your team or your decision makers are biased or have a conflict or another issue that requires you to recuse yourself and you just cannot act, right, because you do not have a quorum, then some of those do come into play. Right, moving on. These are some other government ethics issues. There are many, but these are some of the few that we like to highlight. And again, these ones are personal liability. You can always call the O G E C if you have questions. These include gifts and use of position of office. Use of position of office is kind of similar to conflicts. It prohibits any public official from using or trying to use your position to obtain a financial benefit. If that opportunity for a financial benefit would not have otherwise been available, but for your position as a public official. So an example is using public resources to conduct private business. You would not have had, you wouldn't have had access to those public resources without your position as a public official. And just like all the others, these can have some overlap with the other matters that have already covered. Gifts, gifts are very broad. It's just anything of economic value. It can include discounts, forgiveness of debt, that are not offered to the general public and are offered because the other individual has a legislative or administrative interest in the decisions or votes of you. That's pretty broad again, so I just recommend that you err on the side of caution and you disclose any gifts that have a cumulative value from an individual of over fifty dollars in a calendar year. And that can add up quickly. I always give the example of drinks. So if you go out for drinks every couple of weeks with a private business owner or developer in the, in the area and, you know, every first time you go out, you're, the round's on you, next time it's on them. One time, that's fine, but over the course of the year, that can really start to add up. That can add up to fifty dollars pretty quickly. Especially in this economy. So that can also, again, apply to relatives and your household and businesses with which you're associated. So important to keep in mind. Alright, moving on to public meeting issues in general. So again, this is something that applies to all public meetings, also to land use decision-making. So planning commission and city council are both subject to Oregon Public Meetings laws, which are found in O R S one ninety-two, six twenty, and following, just that whole statutory series. All meetings that occur in the public eye must be publicly noticed and must be neutrally open to the public. And this applies to meetings where a decision, decision or deliberation on a matter of official public business occurs. And involves a quorum of your particular decision-making body. For each of you, I believe, you have seven members on each of your various decision-making bodies. So a quorum is a majority, which is four. Anytime a four of you meet or convene, whether that is in person or non-contemporaneously, so that means via email or via text, or phone call, or even social media posts, that could be inadvertently a public meeting. So it's important, for example, that, that one thing that I keep going back to, which is that reply all on an email, right? If you accidentally reply all where multiple council members are CC'd, you might be accidentally creating a public meeting. You didn't even realize it. If you're talking through the city manager, for example, and you are conveying your opinions or your, or certain facts on a particular decision, you might be accidentally deliberating for or more of you on a particular matter outside of the public meeting context. So just be careful where it involves four or more of you discussing a matter.
Got a quick question. If they're through a, a case and it, there's, if you're gone or they're absent or they're bi, they get removed for bias or they move themselves for conflict and you're down to four members. Obviously with three, you can't make the decision. If you have four, does the vote then have to be unanimous? It has to be four oh, or it doesn't pass?
So I actually just looked that up in your council rules, because it's different for everyone, but for you all, it is a majority of the individuals present.
Well, if there's four, you still need three.
Three.
Or two, one, and?
The one stain.
Right. So these are requirements specifically for hearings. So you have additional requirements on top of those public meeting requirements, specifically when you're conducting hearings. Quasi-judicial hearings, there are specific noticing requirements. Those are time periods when you need to provide notice, who you need to provide notice to, et cetera. Staff typically provides a script, open a hearing, which meets other requirements that are in state law, including raise it or waive it, certain requirements you must, must object to during the hearing, or else you don't get a chance to on appeal. And also specifically identifying the criteria that you may consider. At the initial evidentiary hearing, which is a term that's used in law, it means the first time that you are meeting in a public hearing to consider evidence and basically deliberate on the decision, but not the subsequent hearings following that. Anyone can ask for time to present additional arguments or evidence. The record must be held open or continuance must be granted. So there can be multiple, multiple public hearings on a particular matter. And an applicant gets seven days after the record closes to submit final written argument. So the applicant usually gets the final say. Moving on to particular hearings issues. Ultimately, the presiding officer has inherent authority to maintain order and decorum during the, during the course of a meeting. A council or planning commission can adopt reasonable rules for conduct of the meeting and the order and length of public testimony, which may be specified by ordinances or other rules in particular. Just usually it must be clear and objective. It has to be neutral, neutrally applied to everyone. When dealing with disturbances, it's a little different when you're in a quasi-judicial hearing than if you're just in a regular public meeting. It's, it's a lower bar to removing an individual. First, we recommend that you provide a warning. If the behavior continues, you may ask them to leave the meeting. If they do not leave, they can be treated as a trespasser and removed. Though it is a good best practice just to call a recess if you're having a disturbance and attempt to deal with the matter outside of the hearing context and then return.
Ashley, may I ask you a question about that? So I think it was the League of Oregon Cities where I read that, because you get into First Amendment issues, that can be avoided. So calling a recess is one option, but I also read, and I think the city of Portland has practiced this as well, that they will actually end the meeting. And instead of potentially getting into a lawsuit issue and just pick it back up at another time.
Yeah, that's a great point. So that's why I said this is a little bit of a lower bar than other public meetings, right? And First Amendment is always something good to consider anytime you're acting in the public, right? But that is a, it's a much higher bar when you're just conducting a general public meeting where you're allowing anyone to comment. In that case, I wholeheartedly agree with you. It's best to just either end the meeting or not take some sort of action where you're physically removing the person unless they are at danger, an imminent threat, or they're doing some sort of thing that makes it impossible to continue your meeting. It's a pretty high bar for First Amendment in Oregon. Contrast, hearings have a specific process. It's a quasi-judicial proceeding. So it's kind of like if you were in a court, right? If someone was standing up and making a disturbance, they could be removed. It's a different, it's a different standard. So you're right, again, it's a little different. Of course, you can be considering what's legal and what's good. And so, you know, you can, if you prefer, that's why, you know, as a, as a tip, it's good to call a recess. That's a good best practice. But when necessary, you can remove them. You have a little bit more of a right than you would in a typical public meeting. Right. So criterion findings. So criteria, approval or denial of an application must be based on standards and criteria that are adopted by an ordinance. So you must only look at the standards and criteria that are set forth in your local code or in state law. A decision must be accompanied by a statement that explains the relevant criteria. So those parts that are relevant from your code and the facts that you relied upon when you were making the decision and your justification for the decision based on that criteria. So linking those two things together. Those together encompass the findings. Your decision must be based on substantial evidence in the record. So there could be some evidence that doesn't quite go towards your final decision, but the vast majority of the evidence, the substantial evidence must in fact support the decision that you make. And you must also, in your findings, resolve conflicts that might exist in the evidence.
Ashley, can you elaborate on the statement, resolve conflicts in the evidence? Can you give an example, please?
Yeah. So there is what's called support and deference given to decisions that are made by local entities. So when L U B A or another appellate body is looking at a decision made by you all, they give you deference on the way that you interpreted the facts presented to you or the way that you interpreted, for example, an ambiguity in your local code. So if there is potentially like an ambiguity or a conflict, one person said one thing, one person said another thing, the way that you ultimately, you do have some discretion to decide which way to follow or how to interpret that ambiguity and to resolve, but you must address it. You cannot just simply ignore that ambiguity or that apparent conflict. And L U B A will give you deference on the way that you ultimately go, provided it, you know, meets the substantial evidence standard and it's clear that it was based on standards and criteria that were adopted by ordinance. Right. So there is robust appeal procedures for land use decisions. There's a local process and also a state level process. Local appeals, applications are generally divided into categories in your code. Those can include type one, type two, type three, and type four, most typically. Types one and two are more administrative or what people call typically ministerial. It doesn't really involve much of an exercise of judgment. Type three are usually quasi-judicial and type four are typically legislative. And your, your actual code defines who the initial decision maker is and also who the appeal body is, whether that goes to somebody else on a local level or whether that actually ends up going straight to L U B A or something else. When an appeal occurs, it can be what's called de novo, which means that it is anew. That's what de novo means, anew. It means that you have a completely new hearing process and you're allowed to enter new facts, new evidence. Or an appeal can be on the record, which means that there's no new evidence and the decision that's made on appeal is simply based on the record from the initial decision maker. Once, oh yeah.
If you do a completely new hearing, new record, anything from the past one be used?
It still involves, it's still, yeah, an appeal still is involving, most typically, it's still involving the prior evidence. It's just permitting the additional evidence to be entered. That's most standard. So after you finish your local appellate process, so, and you make your final local decision, then it can be further appealed on a state level. Final local decision may be appealed to L U B A, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals. And then after L U B A makes it, its decision, it may be further appealed to the Oregon Court of Appeals. And from there, it ends with the Oregon Supreme Court. Each of these individuals may either choose to affirm the lower decision, which means they agree with you. They can reverse the local decision, which basically means they invalidate it and you have to start fresh. Or they may remand the local decision, some or part of it, which essentially means that they're requesting, they believe that you were insufficient in your facts or your findings in some way. You didn't make the sufficient determination that they wanted you to make. So they send it back to you for more facts, more findings, et cetera. As far as the process on remand, there's actually a lot of local discretion. They, or case law is silent on whether you have to hold a hearing, whether you have to confine your discussion on remand to the issues on remand, or whether you may reopen the record, and a lot of other issues as well. But as we previously mentioned, as the mayor mentioned, it's important to be mindful that appeals can result in a remand. So you may be making a new decision on the same application again in the future. So it's important, again, like I already said, to consider the implications for bias and expertise contacts with conduct after making a decision. So these are some specific statutory, kind of like requirements, pitfalls, things to just kind of like keep in mind when you're going through the local decision-making process. The first of these is called locally, the hundred and twenty day rule. And this rule is set forth in statute. It says that a final decision, including all local appeals, must be made within a hundred and twenty days after the application is deemed complete. So from that date, you have a hundred and twenty days, which really is not that long. That's just four months, including all local appeals. So to hear your hearing, to hear the appellate hearing, et cetera, all of that. If you fail to meet that deadline, the city is required to refund at least half of the fees and deposits that were paid. And it allows the applicant to file a writ, a writ of mandamus in circuit court, where the application is presumed approved unless the city can show that the approval would violate code. It's a much higher standard, so it's really important to comply with that timeline.
Question, is that a state statute or city?
State, statutory requirement. No, it's a good question. It's a good question.
We, the city can't, I mean, can they make it ninety days if the city wants, but they can't make it more than a hundred and twenty days?
I've never seen someone do less, but I guess you could if you wanted to. More often, the parties voluntarily decide to extend the deadline, because that is, it's pretty burdensome on a city, to be honest, to try to produce written findings, produce the evidence necessary for the record, schedule a hearing, schedule subsequent appeals. All of this within four months, you know, you have to have close coordination between your attorneys, between your staff, between your decision makers, et cetera. You have to really be in sync. And you can choose to voluntarily extend in writing that one hundred and twenty day period, as long as the applicant agrees, up to two hundred and forty-five days or three hundred and thirty-five days if you are undertaking some sort of mediation. And just as a tip, it's good to have, like, extension forms at hearings in case it seems like subsequent hearings are necessary, appeals are going to occur, et cetera. So you can just have the applicant sign those.
And Lori, I have a question just for my benefit. Not every application necessitates a hearing, right? So which, which applications will get a hearing and which won't?
Well, in currently, even, so Ashley mentioned the two types of land use hearings. Even in, in scappus, we have limited land use, which really in a lot of other cities are sta- Even in scappus, we have limited land use, which really in a lot of other cities are staff approved. We've mentioned as part of the 50 year planning effort, we are looking to have some of those applications be staff approved if they're under certain thresholds. So typically, like the planning commission really is looking at a lot of subdivisions and site development review that typically, you know, no variance is involved, not outside of the box at all. Still, they're reviewing those. And so those are the ones we're looking to change. But in terms of things that don't go to hearings, three lot minor partitions, sensitive lands development permits, if they're not associated with any other like site development review. Property line adjustments. So they're going to be really a lot more just straight to the facts and really no, no discretion, basically. And again, everything else here goes to planning commission. Even I think we used to have all of our tree removal permits go to planning commission, which you could imagine was quite onerous. And so, you know, over time, that has sort of lessened.
Also, just to note on that, there has been a change on limited land use decisions in the legislature. In House Bill 1564, that was one of the many changes in that house, or in Senate bill, I apologize, in Senate Bill 1564. Now, previously, the limited land use process was discretionary. You could choose to follow it if you wanted to for replats, property line adjustments, nonconforming land use changes are the main ones. But now you're required to, once this section of the bill comes into effect. And I believe that's 2025, but I could confirm that.
Any of those changes there, will that affect our 50 year plan requirements? I mean, going to our changes?
We can coordinate on that. And I can share with you the LCDC, they did a great summary of all the bills.
And so in that, in that case, there's no discretion, then you just, it's great, it cannot be.
Yeah, it follows the limited land use decision making process. Alright. So another of these requirements, these things that specifically apply to land use decision making is what's called colloquially the fixed goalpost rule. And this also has been recently changed through legislation. But it basically says that a decision must be based on standards and criteria that are applicable at the time the application was first submitted. So even if an application takes a long time to process or if it comes back on remand, for example, you still have to apply whatever was in effect at the time the application was submitted, regardless of code updates. Now, with recent legislation, again, in 1537, applicant can choose, so in their discretion, they can choose to apply standards that were, that came into effect after their application was submitted. But again, that is in their discretion. They have to choose to do that. You cannot force them to do that. It's all related to housing.
Where it's more beneficial for them to apply newer?
I think that was the intent behind it, but that it does not have to be how it's applied.
They wouldn't have to go back through a whole process?
No, it's.
New application, none of that?
No, it's, it's basically asking you all, what standards and criteria are you going to use when you're actually looking at whether this application is approved or denied? You know, again, you have to identify your findings and criteria. So when you're doing that, you have to identify the standards that you're applying. And the original fixed goalpost rule said, you must only apply the criteria that was in effect at the time the application was submitted. Now, the applicant can choose to apply later criteria. Oh, definitely.
You're outlining the criteria.
Definitely. Yes, most definitely. Yeah, it would, it would take additional coordination. Yeah. Right. Another requirement is what is referred to as clear and objective requirements. This is a can of worms. On its surface, it looks pretty simple, but in practice, it can get pretty complicated. This is a general requirement, again, comes out of state law. It says that all standards, conditions, procedures regulating the development of housing must be clear and objective. Sounds simple on its face, in practice is pretty difficult. If the procedures, conditions, standards, et cetera, are not clear and objective, they cannot be applied to the development. You can provide unclear or subjective paths, an alternate discretionary path, so long as the clear and objective path is still available. So a great example of that is a subdivision where you also have a planned unit development option, as long as the subdivision path is available and you can offer the alternate discretionary path. This is again, something where we've seen a lot of legal movement in the last couple of years, a lot. Not much litigation, but I think that is going to change in the near future as cities have been kind of slow to adopt clear and objective requirements, just because it's such a momentous task. It takes basically a comprehensive update to your entire local code, which is really a big task. But again, in this recent Senate bill, there's creation of this organization called HAPO, which their mission is to comply with housing law and to investigate compliance specifically. So they're kind of indicating that their direction that they're going with this is that they're not going to entertain noncompliance anymore. They also have passed a clear and objective, what they called a presumed clear and objective model housing ordinance, which must be adopted by 2026. And so I think, you know, there are some tools that the state is reaching out with to try to help cities along in their path towards clearness and objectivity, but it's, we're not quite there yet. There's still a long way to go.
So not, there hasn't been a lot of judicial motion, which is kind of weird because clear is a very hard term. I imagine there will be a lot of litigation before that actually gets locked.
Yes, especially because, because if the terms are not determined clear and objective, if they cannot be applied. The application. So there's many ways that can be taken, all sides of a lawsuit. Right. And then finally, last but not least, you have constitutional issues to keep in mind. The main one in land use context is taking, which is a governmental appropriation of private property. This is found in the Fifth Amendment of the Oregon Constitution. Under both state and federal constitutions, the government must provide just compensation anytime they're doing a taking. A taking can also be the result of regulations that limit the use of property. And more commonly, it can be the result of exactions, including conditions of approval that require transfer of private property, such as road dedications, construction of improvements, et cetera. And in order for these to be valid, they must meet two requirements in order to be constitutional. These two requirements come out of two foundational cases. You often hear them referred to together in the same sentence as Nolan and Dolan. And Nolan and Dolan basically state that you have to have a nexus and rough proportionality to the taking for it to be constitutional. Nexus requires that the relationship between that exaction and the underlying regulation of the property, there must be that rough nexus, that rough connection between the two. And then rough proportionality means what it says, the exaction has to be related and proportionate in nature to the impact of the proposed development. This is another one that, you know, on its surface might look sort of simple, but like with everything constitution related, gets much more complicated in practice, as you can imagine. So that is the end of my presentation. Have some additional resources listed up there. If anyone, I also have the O G E C contact information, their hours, their phone number and mailing address. If you have any questions, individual questions, specific questions, you can contact them there.
Would you say Luba, when it does go with something to appeal, usually the issue seems to be bias mostly or?
There's all sorts of legal, legal Luba appeals. I think bias is a less common Luba appeal. It's definitely litigated. But in my experience, bias is one of those things where I mentioned raise it or waive it. So essentially, the applicant or whoever is claiming bias has to publicly object during the hearing in order to be able to claim it at a later stage. So developers, for multiple reasons, sometimes err on the side of not doing that unless it's truly, they think it's truly going to have an effect on the decision. Because, you know, for multiple reasons, they want the city on their side. They don't want to give an appearance of, you know, public animosity, et cetera, right? But when it's necessary, when they feel like there's true animus, when they feel like there's true bias, they definitely won't shirk from it. But more often, a Luba appeal will be on procedural or substantive claims. So on, you know, a failure of the process in some way or on, in the opinion of the appellate, some, in substantial evidence, right? Like a failure to make your decision on the substantial evidence in the record or to inaccurately conclude on the evidence or some other substantive matter.
You can tie this in with conflict of interest stuff. If you disclose it, somebody has to comment on it there. They can't bring it up later. If you don't disclose it, it gets money.
Raise it or waive it.
Great question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your time. Thank you. Okay, we've got one more item. You guys are wanting to stick around. Time to move on to number four, discussion regarding interim positions. Obviously, right now, we have a couple with an interim city manager and, you know, and the deputy, the deputy director, intern interim. It's not something we see a whole bunch here. It's kind of new to some of our counselors. Kind of going through our codes and whatnot. We wanted to kind of visit that for future councils. If this comes up again, or to make sure we're on, you know, our code, that we're following it and everything, we wanted to kind of address it. So council president Tyler Miller will go over a few things now.
Thank you, Mayor. So with the current events going on, we've had discussions with legal counsel about interim positions. And it was brought up by legal counsel that many cities and in fact, the League of Oregon Cities has some suggested model language for city manager pro temp positions.
Marissa, do you have the interim position discussion paperwork that you hand out something to everybody?
Yeah.
Can I photo and just text it to her?
Sure, of course. And then I gave a copy to Susan so she can include it in the minutes as well. So I got to looking at this and found that there's many cities across Oregon of various sizes that have this actual position created, the pro temp position. And it basically is to acknowledge that there's a lot of institutional knowledge that sometimes interims don't always have when they come in. And we don't always want big changes made that could basically impact the city and outlive the contract that we have with an interim. So in talking to the city attorney, we basically pulled out the language that other cities are using. And right now, this is just basically to take the temperature on council to see if this is something that they're interested in. And if this is something that we're interested in pursuing, then we would work with the city attorney to draft the actual language to bring back to council. And just go from there. And then council would have the option of voting on it. And then I think there's, it's actually would be an ordinance. And so there would have to be a reading and we would follow the, whatever procedure that the city attorney gives us for implementing it.
Yeah, one question I did have is when we were looking at interim city manager and going forward, I think in our codes, it says interim city manager for up to six months. And then it didn't really say anything after that. And I was like, well, what if you aren't quite ready? What if you have to extend? They go, well, there's kind of gray area, you know, you could possibly do this. I think maybe we revisit it. So it is kind of cut and dried that if you need to extend it, it says this. So we can follow it a lot easier. Is one thing I noticed when looking at interim city manager. It didn't say that you could do it forever or two terms. It just said for six months. And then it was a little gray and I was a little nervous being the gray area afterwards. What if we weren't quite ready? Did you receive that text, Marissa?
You wanted to see it now?
I can read it.
Yeah, I'll read it since I wrote it. But again, I want to, I want to reiterate that this is just an example. So we would actually go work with legal counsel and then we bring back something the council is, can review further and vote on. So it says, per the city attorney, the League of Oregon Cities has some suggested model language used for temporary personnel, such as city manager. A Google search revealed multiple cities in Oregon of various sizes have a city manager pro temp position. Temporary city managers are appointed to the specific, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Pro temp position, job description, when the city manager vacancy occurs. The following is an example of pro temp position language the city may adopt. When the city manager is temporarily disabled from acting as the city manager or when the office of city manager becomes vacant, the council will appoint a city manager pro temp. The city manager pro temp has the authority and duties of city manager, except that a pro temp city manager must first seek the approval of the majority of the council for any of the following. And then there's five bullet points. First one being appointing or removing employees. Second, retaining contractors or terminating contractors and consultants. Three, restructuring departments, staff classifications or positions. Four, negotiations with, excuse me, negotiating with the labor union. And five, decisions regarding litigation the city is involved in or likely to become involved in. And then there's an issue for discussion for council at the bottom here. It's the last paragraph. It said, should the mayor and city council president work with the city attorney to finalize a city manager pro temp and police chief pro temp job description that should another vacancy in the future occur, the city can appoint these temporary positions to the pro temp position. Once the descriptions and any related actions are in final draft form by the city attorney, mayor and council president, the draft will be brought back to council for a vote to approve in any other formal process that may be required by the charter or scappus municipal code.
Yeah, one question I did have, Larry, kind of in, in, in some of your talkings, that you've got involved in something now that might require you to come back for months ahead, you know, down the road. Is that pretty common or typical? If you're, if it's a litigation and you, whatever, you know, you were the one that acted on it, then you might be the one to have to come back for the next three, four, or five, six months until the case is done. Is that pretty standard that you'll be gone and living somewhere else, but you'll have to come back? Is there a way to have avoided that without, you know, still being able to negotiate or go? Or is, you know, it was kind of interesting to hear that.
Well, very well, it could be that court of action, a person would have to come back. I would imagine that would apply mostly to employee problems, dismissals, that kind of stuff, probably the most. On other things like negotiations, that kind of stuff, generally you pass it on. So it's not a legal matter. I would imagine, like, there's one police officer that I dismissed. And I'd already been dismissed or whatever off. We went through the system and then I finally signed a final paperwork. They did that. When I was here 10 years ago, and I forgive me for my lack of memory, the ex-police chief. We've been here a long time. He won a big lawsuit against the city.
Grayson.
Grayson, okay. I ended up signing his final paperwork. I didn't, I didn't know that. I never met the guy. And I have no opinions. Just that they had worked on that before and then the panel had come to me and the attorney, you know, they said, hey, you gotta sign this. Things like that happen.
I just, I just like, is that fair? I mean, I know if you're, if we hire an interim that we know is only three to five, maybe six months, and we put some of those things on them that might last for years. I get it if you're the city manager and you make that decision and you leave, yeah, you might have to come back. But on an interim, some of those things, can you wait and then let the new city manager get involved? Or some of those things, there's a time limit. You have to, you have to act. It just has to be done. Those are some of the things while I was kind of looking at this. Is there things we can do to protect, you know, city manager and the council? can do to protect, you know, city manager and the council and the city going forward?
Yeah, that is, I don't think that's a big concern, a big worry. My thing would be that if you get a city manager in and you limit what they can do and so forth too much, why bother? And have your secretary to maintain order, or whatever. No, if you're not going to let the manager operate and do what he thinks, or she is best for the city with the council approvals.
Kind of scares me too, is it, talking to Mike Sykes, city managers are about two to three, you know, three years on average now in a lot of them, and just heard North Plains is looking. So I mean, it kind of makes me wonder, if you have to go through this every three to four years, is there an issue? So that's why I was willing to listen.
Yeah, I'm going through. I do think, looking at the city rules, whether or not it's specific to specific, like city manager or chief or what have you, I do think we need to have some kind of structural rule set for interim positions to just get the lay of the land in terms philosophically about what do these roles need to have check on, whatnot. If we want to get to the individual position, I'm open to the discussion there, but I do think we need to have some governing guidelines in terms of the roles themselves, just so everyone knows what to expect going through, or what level of strategic engagement we should expect on temporary basis.
And was the language in here, Council President Miller, is this what's proposed or offered by the League of Oregon Cities, or is this some adaptation of your own of what's posted there?
Yeah, so that is an adaptation. So this is, some of this is born out of the current concerns that are occurring, but this is suggested, and we can, my suggestion, and we can go through this, of course, with legal counsel, and I think that she'll be able to articulate maybe the necessity for some of these things too. But I do believe that it's an exercise that we need to do.
I would ask if you do that, and that's definitely your prerogative, but make sure you share those with your new acting city manager, who will that be, maybe before they take the job, so they know what the restrictions are.
Yeah, I think acting interim city, if your regular city manager obviously wouldn't follow the interim, and maybe we would use them to help us guide. But yes, I think going in with an interim, you're going through this ahead of time, you're telling them their expectations, what's coming up in the next six months that you're expecting out of them, so you know coming in, your role.
But also, what I'm getting at, I would show them the restrictions. Some may like that, some may not, so I'd make sure they're aware of them.
Full disclosure, I think, is appropriate there. So again, the purpose of this is just to see if there's an appetite to move further with this. I didn't want to spend too much time with the city attorney and run up billable hours without getting a consensus from council. Obviously did confer with the mayor about it, but we want to make sure that the consensus of council is this is something that we want to look at before we involve the city attorney and run up billable hours there.
I think it's why it's given the unknowns ahead of us. For whatever reason, we don't have a candidate that we end up selecting, we could have another interim. I think it's good to define this, so I would be in favor of that.
And I personally will do my, some research on my own too, looking at, maybe requesting some more information from League of Oregon Cities and asking the mayors, you know, different things, to see if they have things that might help us as well. Obviously, this was my first interim, and I wanted to make sure I give you all the tools you can, and come in with you know exactly what is going on. So yeah, if, if these were the things, you know, that might limit some of the people that apply, based on what the job description is. So it'd be good to.
You're saying, sorry, you're saying not necessarily the city, permanent city manager position, but interim?
Interims.
This only applies to interim, not permanent.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I kind of agree with you, I'll be doing my own research too, kind of a little bit more. But for me, I'm always, I always like to make sure that we don't have anything like this already in place, then we should explore having more detailed on, we're looking for interim, if, and it's not just for city manager, it can be an interim for chief, or whatever it may be, or especially a high position. So, so we all, they know when they're, what they're coming into, and then we know what to expect from them.
Worth also, because the six month does give pause as well, like, we'd hope we could have things, but it'd be good to have clear instruction on like what the renewal could be, or, you know, what our runway is associated if we need more time, or how we can renegotiate those contract extensions.
And this is not something to be like saying, we're going to handhold or limit of the interim. I think it's just a way of knowing the expectations, right? What we expect from them and what they expect from us. So I think it's just having expectations written down, and just, you don't have to call them limitations, expectations, and then I think, every job position you walk into, you walk, okay, what's your expectations of that position? It's the same thing.
And again, it's, it's not that they can't do them, but if you use this language, it's approval by the council.
Right, and if it makes sense to do and it's reasonable, then there's no reason to think the council's gonna not agree with it anyway. It's just making sure that, I mean, we really don't know what we're going to get when we get an interim, I mean, the search is hard. You know, and so the last thing that I think we would want to experience is somebody coming in and making major changes that are short term, that are going to, that somebody else is going to come in and may not agree with, it's her permanent, and then have a lot to undo. So, and that's, that's not to say that that would happen, but I think there's a reason why the League of Oregon Cities has this model language, or some of this model language, and reason why a lot of the cities have something similar throughout Oregon.
Does it apply to, like Dave, if, when he steps in? Or are there other, is there other things within his job title that says he may step in for a week or two? I mean, is that?
Well, so the way that it would work is that, just like Larry did, Larry signed a contract or an agreement. So in the language of that contract or agreement, it would say that you're being assigned or offered a position under city manager pro temp, and then at that point, that's what establishes the guidelines, the rules, so to speak, with that position.
That doesn't affect Dave necessarily, who's filling in as city manager for a short time.
So that's an interesting question. I think that would be a city attorney question. I don't really know what the right answer for that is, or the best answer.
It can be all interim.
I would want it to extend, certainly, right? It's the same principle, you want everyone to be following the same expectation, yeah.
Any more feedback, Marissa?
It would definitely, if that is the case, if we did want them to follow, that would create a formality, because we would have to issue probably a class change, or some sort of other negotiation. It establishes they're acting and appointed temporarily to the city manager pro temp position.
We could go through with legal specifically around that. I do think we need to have a framework connected even to that, so we can define, you know, the pro temp role being for a period greater than X, you know, and that, that opens us up for certain.
Yeah, we can certainly dive into it more.
I'd like to hear from Counselor LaFrance before I weigh in.
Did you, did you weigh in yet? After you?
I mean, unless I'm missing something, I don't, I see the benefits. I'm, else, I'm missing something? I guess, what, are there any negative consequences? It's, I don't know, it's.
I can't hear who's talking, can you please look into the microphone?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I'm just kind of spitballing here, but, you know, appointing and removing employees, that could be personnel issues that, I don't know if, you know, a union would agree to have a city council go over their employee file, essentially, to make a determination whether or not to fire somebody. And I think that could be problematic. Restructuring departments, staff classifications, or positions, I mean, is that, how into the weeds is that? I mean, does that still give the department heads authority to ask someone to move from one position to another, switch a shift, do a different job? I think that that has to be, that's best handled by the department heads, I believe. Negotiating with the labor union, any contractors, or terminating contractors, terminating contractors or consultants, again, I think that that's best determined between the department head, or at least have heavy input, I don't know if that's so much a council role. And decisions regarding litigation the city is involved in, or is likely to become involved in, some of those, at least on the police department side, happen very rapidly. I don't know how, I, I think it'd be more of, we could keep you apprised of what's happening, but waiting for a decision to be made, and those decisions are made on the street and they happen in an instant, and oftentimes are unavoidable. So I, I guess, I, I understand some of these, but again, by Counselor Miller's own admission, these are just kind of his recommendations. I would just watch those, and just make sure to work with council to check out the legalities of it, because of course, we want to protect staff as much as possible, and I think some of that is often obtained by working with their department heads and their supervisors, as opposed to waiting for an entire council to come up with a decision that affects them.
Hey, you know, I appreciate that, that's, I think's valid. It does, it does.
I think we, in the process, we would definitely ask chiefs and the city managers for their input, cover their questions, how, you know, how can we answer those? Make sure we're addressing those issues, and see, but I can also see at the same time, if you come in and you're here for four months, and you reorganize the whole department and then you're gone, then it has to be done all over again. I mean, I, I see that, but again, I also, it's not my job, city manager's job to hire and do that, so I want to give them that power. But I also, I would respect, I hope that they would, if they are going to make a big decision, they want council's approval or thoughts, I would think they would come to us most of the time. We're looking to, you know, cancel this huge contract we've been working on for five years, and we want to cancel it, but you're gone in two months. I would hope that that would be there, but this would just give us some more guardrails, yet, again, I don't want to micromanage, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, our whole form of governance is based separating council, running staff.
So on that note, the charter actually describes where the powers lie, and I don't know how much you can do to, even with a pro temp, but again, I mean, that would be legal.
Yeah, and this was already sent to legal counsel, and she didn't have any issues with it, and to Mr. Jensen's point, number one is actually straight out of the model language. One, two, so again, I, I don't understand why there would be any issues with this, because it's still staff coming to us saying, we need to do this because, and making the case. I don't think any council, majority council's going to object with anything that's reasonable. But again, somebody, if we're, there's so much context that we have been through, like with the police department, for example, too, and then we bring somebody else in that doesn't know any of that, too, obviously, that context informs, you know, decisions. But again, I go back that we are, if this is a consensus of council, we're going to go back to legal counsel, and get the opinion and make sure that this is all within, because the charter is a major concern, but there is some carve outs through using an ordinance, and this is a common practice for Oregon Cities.
There may be a little bit different language for an interim chief versus an interim city manager, because there might be time, more time, or more serious issues. Counselor Santiago?
Thank you. I just want to address your, I think there's some concerns, there might be some misunderstanding, because what I'm hearing is, because you say to protect staff, I think this is why we want to do it, is to protect their staff. That's how I see it. And, and we're not, everything you mentioned, oh, should be decided by the department heads. The department heads are, that's their permanent position, they're what they do. So it's, yes, they should be by the department heads, but they're permanent. This is for someone that's not permanent. So just wanted to clarify that, and, you know, I think we're kind of saying the same thing, we're trying to protect staff and the city, and make sure, just, you don't know, it's not you, it's just, we don't know who come in in those positions.
With all due respect.
We just want to. I'm sorry?
With all due respect, we don't know a lot of them, we have a lot of mid-level management.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
With all due respect, a lot of times, we don't know, because even with a permanent, I guess I'm just confused.
Right, because this is just for interim, this is somebody that's going to come within a few months and then take off. So this is not for a permit, we're not, we're not putting this in the city manager's, you know, job description, or any type of job description. So that's, you know, we're, we're trying, somebody that can come in and fire all the department heads, right?
Trying to do the best thing for the city. We're watching, we're trying to watch out for the city's interests is what this comes down to. The intention, the intention is, is to do the best thing for the city, and I think it's important to keep in mind what the role of an interim is, and that is to come in during a very short, hopefully a very short window, and keep the ship sailing in the right direction while we go through the hiring process, and the competitive recruitment process, and that's going to be their, their department to run.
And I really don't want to rewrite the book, or create something new, I would like to see what other cities do. I mean, there's a lot of other cities in Oregon, if they have, if the majority have them something similar, then, yeah.
So with that being said, Mayor, before we involve legal, can then counselors who have said they want to do their own research, such as yourself and Counselor Santiago, go out and do that independent research and bring that back before we start doing billable hours?
Yes. Whoever wants to get involved, get a little bit of information, if we've got enough, that we feel good about going to the next level.
That would be great. I also think that, as it relates to an interim role, maybe what we need to do next time, I understand there's probably some ordinance stuff, but I think maybe where we fell short this time is what I'm hearing from Counselor Miller, is, I mean, we didn't have a job description for the interim as built out as we should have, and going forward, that's something that we need to have, and we can spell those things out during a job description for that interim. I just want to be mindful of how much money we're spending on some of these things with the attorney. I think some of these things can be mitigated quite easily through a job description, and just being really open and transparent through that interim hiring process of what the expectations are and what they aren't.
Mr. Grant, I do have, take issue with counselors doing their own research on this, and the only reason is, is because there's legalities involved in this too, with what the charter can have. And I think the only thing that Ashley would be doing is making sure that drafting the position, which is going to be slightly changed from our current city manager position, and then I believe it has to be adopted to be compliant with the charter, is it has to be passed as an ordinance, which means we have to do a first reading and a second reading.
But can I not go out to the listserv of all mayors of all the cities and ask them, you know, some pointed questions if they have, you know, city manager pro temp positions? And so what is their?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do that, go for it. It's a, if you Google search pro temp city manager, there's like dozens of different cities that come up with those words that have been implemented.
Counselor Miller, are you trying to get this done before June 30th?
No, I, I think it is important to move along, because we don't know what we're going to see with the city manager process, so I think it is important. I mean, I wouldn't imagine that this would take more than two hours of the city attorney's time, but I am concerned about what's going to happen with the city. I want to err on the side of caution.
And I personally want to make, it's nothing with me, Larry hasn't done anything on here that makes me think of any reason to do this. It's, if more, I want to protect you from giving you the expectation, so you kind of know going in what we're expecting out of you. So there's, definitely on my part, there's nothing that you've done that it's, I want to prevent.
So actions on this would be, if people do want to do research, maybe get information or examples back to Council President Miller in a week?
In days?
Oh, the holiday.
Yeah. I will reach out and try to do that. See if I can just get a sense of what other cities are doing, some of the language, maybe a couple of words that they have in theirs, before we send it to the rest of council.
So do we need a motion or a consensus, or what do you, what do we want to do?
I think it's just returned back at this point.
I've heard enough that people are willing to look at it, so. I've heard enough that people are willing to look at it, so I think I will proceed with that.
I think that the question for legal, though, is, do you think worth time? It's just, are we limited at all because of section 17 on the charter? Just pulling it up real quick, that's where city manager is defined. And it does have specific or a definite or indefinite period, which leads me to believe that the definite structurally is defined as interim. So that's the only thing that I would have a question on. Though there's also clauses underneath that that could cover city council coverage. So that would be my big question is there's just like two sentences in the charter. That would be nice to have the legals take on before we dig further.
It says city manager indefinite or?
Definite or indefinite. They shall be appointed for a definite or indefinite period by the.
It doesn't say city manager pro temp.
No, there's no.
That's, I think that's established.
Which should be, yeah, and that's, that's kind of what I think. And it also has all of the, a lot of these subsections in here as by rule of council. So we could change some of those rules.
And she actually did make the recommendation of adopting this position after reviewing her. But we can hear more about that later.
Yep.
Okay, more? Good, Marissa? Okay, moving on. Calendar. You're on May 20th, so at May 23rd, we do have a EDC meeting at noon has been canceled. We have a special meeting at 6:00 PM here. Farmers market again every Saturday, nine to two. May 27th, city offices close and Oriole Day. Any update, city manager?
Uh, yes, uh, my problem I got, I, we, we wanted to update you on the police department and where we're at. My problem is going to take a little bit longer than.
Let's, can we make a, a motion now if the executive session will go over? So is it okay to?
Yeah, I think so. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that council extend meeting past 9:00 PM.
Council President Miller takes a motion, extend the meeting past nine, any second. Thinking by Counselor Santiago, any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pushing carries. Thank you.
Now, can? Okay, good. Because she has this, she's going to put up there. We want to bring you up to data where we're at and sort of where we think we're headed with the police department. If you look at the, the flow chart there, right now, we have the public safety director and we have lieutenant. We have two sergeants. And then we have budgeted in, in, in this year's budget, next year's, too, eight positions for patrolmen. However, two of those right now are in training. Three of them are being active and three of them are vacant. If you look down below, you can see why they're vacant. One of them goes to, I, I, I just, this just flat out, I'm sorry, this flat amazes me. Anyhow, one of them goes to a settlement conference June, June 6th. One of them's off payroll, goes to arbitration. And one of them's still on a payroll, has been on a payroll since 2020. That's, that's your, that's what's happened. Now, we think, we're trying to find some solutions to this. Again, looking at, you know, what is the next year, a couple of years going to be like? First of all, when you look at the sergeants, one of those sergeants will be retiring on a, close to August 1st. So we're going to lose one of our sergeants. Now, that's not a bad year, he's a good man, but he's off mostly on workers comp now anyhow. And so we're not getting full 40 hours. And so him leaving, we lose a lot of experience and so forth. But now we can gain a full-time person. Right now, we're currently advertising for one sergeant. The advertiser sat out yet, but it will be this week or starting next week.
So is this up to date with, you just said you just let someone go?
Yes, that is number B. Letter B. So right now, we're advertising for two part-time lateral patrol officers, trying to get some, some experience in here and, and getting me, we're advertising those basically on an hourly basis with decent pay. Whether or not we can accomplish that or not, we don't know. And how long it would be, we don't know that either. What we're saying is we want to get some officers in here as quick as we can, but, but some experienced officers. So that's the goal right now. In the next few months, we would like to advertise and, and employ one more sergeant. So we'll have three sergeants and we'll tell you why. Three sergeants and then three patrolmen. And we want to have those, we'd like to go out, advertise for those, get those filled. We want to take our time. We want to make sure that we don't get A, B, and C. That we get officers in here, they're going to stay here and be good officers, do a lot of background checking and so forth.
On those three patrol, you kind of have to wait as A, B, and C rectify to get those final three?
No. The two of them right now are not on payroll. And C, hopefully will be off pretty soon. Now, and also though the, I, I think I mentioned it's maybe, but of the, of the five people we have here, two of those are in training. I think I might have mentioned that. So that we, we have three officers right now who can be out there doing normal patrol work. So the intention then would be they would advertise for three sergeants, two sergeants. So we'd end up with three. And then we'll be advertising for three additional patrolmen and try to get those filled. Now, we will make sure that that fits within the budget. What I'm getting at is if we're still paying one of the sergeants, then we may have to hold off. Now, why do we want three sergeants? What are we going to do in the future? Here's my plan for the next six months or so. Now, the new, the new chief, the new manager will come in and I realize they'll come in and have different opinions and so forth. But it's going to take that manager at least a couple of days to get familiar with what's going on. My goal right now would be to stabilize the police department. We think we have done that. I would encourage you to talk to the patrolmen. You get a chance, meet with them. I think there's a different attitude there now. We are very close to coming up with a contract. Now, you will approve the contract, so I'm not superseding any authority of that. You're going to get a chance to approve it. We've done, we done, we've done what we think you want. During the discussions with, with going into the county and staying with the city, that whole discussion, I think was extremely helpful. But it did present a lot of problems we have with recruitment and where we stand compared to other departments. We looked at this negotiations, not like you normally would. Normally, the manager wants to get by with as cheap as they can with payroll. So, you know, you want 3%, we'll give you two, kind of a thing. That's, that's normal.
Still on open record.
Oh, that, that's okay. No, I don't mind that. I'm not going, no, but on this kind of negotiating this contract, we looked at every benefit that they have and what other cities have. And we tried to make it so that we want them affordable, but we want to make it to where police candidates or at least laterals, especially laterals, will look at this as a good place to work. And you'll see all those details coming up fairly soon. So this contract, we've done it differently than most, we've worked with them and we really have, have enhanced quite a bit of their benefits. We looked at the vacation time, how does that compare to other cities? We've looked at various things they get and saying, how can we make ours as attractive as others? Now, we did that because we think that's what you want. Because as I was talking about going to the other cities, the county and so forth, it was like, how do we get to be competitive? We think this does that. Again, you'll have a chance to look at all this and you'll get the final approval. And we've made it very clear in the negotiations that we are not the final authority that you are and it'll, it'll come to you. But we, we realize that we, we did not do the things we think you will not like. We tried to be very cautious in doing that. Now, I expect to have a, I think within a week, we will have a contract ready that we will send off to our attorney. She's already reviewed it some and sent back some comments. We've incorporated them and now we have a final contract that we want to send off her review. The union will do the same thing with their attorney. So we'll have that back. Well, hopefully there's not a whole lot of things. All we're asking our attorney to do is review it for legal matters. I don't care what she thinks of the substance. It's just the legal part of it we're concerned with. And so that's where we're at. So I would expect before the end of June, and maybe quite a bit before that, before the end of June, you'll have a contract before you to approve. And hopefully you'll like it and we'll be on, on a, on a way. With that said, with that said, what do we?
Can I interrupt you a second? So are we going to review the contract prior to the attorney or this is after?
After attorney. Because, because if she's got changes in it, we want to make sure we, we get them in there. And then you see that. So you'll see basically, if you approve the contract, it'd be ready to go. So you'll see it. But we're going to get it to her and I would imagine it's not going to take her that long. I'm thinking, you know, half a week or a week at the most to review it. Not that long, kind of thing. At least that's our hope. What are we going to do for the future? My intention is to extend the interim's police chief's contract for six months. In the meantime, I've, I've talked to lieutenant. I think we have a wonderful opportunity there with the lieutenant. I think he's, he's extremely capable and, and, and can be a good chief. However, if he was to take that position now, all he would have working for him is a one sergeant and two patrolmen. There's much more to that. I think in order to make our lieutenant successful, we must have some really good people below him to assist him in doing that. I think he needs to have, he needs to have a good lieutenant. The intention of three sergeants is we got one now, two others. Hopefully get some experience in there with the idea that at that point, a lieutenant who would become chief, hopefully, would select one of those sergeants to be his lieutenant.
Yep, but there's, you're going to retire one that's going to retire in a few months, so that you would down to two, right?
Right. And we'll try to hire, in the next, in the next so long, we'll try to hire two more. We, we have the one, we'll get one replacement and then have a third.
If he, if he promoted one, then you would have an open sergeant that you would fill down the road potentially.
If.
If he takes one up.
Oh, well, no, I'm sorry. Okay, if he promoted one to lieutenant, then we'd be back to our two. We only need two.
That would be back to one because the other person's leaving.
We'll have one.
You're counting one, two, three, and then one leaving in October and then you're, you're promoting another one, so you're just.
We're going to actually have four, one, two, three, four.
So it's four.
Potentially, but by the time, before we hire this one, this one will have retired, so we'll have three.
Yeah, we have two right now. We have two now. One of them is going to retire probably in August. But hopefully, we're going to hire, hopefully one by August to fill that position.
Okay.
Then after that, hopefully, we would be, we'd be hiring one more, the third one. And then when, when the lieutenant, if everything worked out right, became chief, he would select one of those, those sergeants to become a lieutenant.
You did say extend interim chief six months, but you did public safety director.
That's what I meant. Yes, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Yes. We think I am so concerned over promoting someone, unless you go just a new, brand new chief, whatever. But if we could, and you've, we, and you have no guarantee that whoever you hire, because you've done in the past. I don't mean you, the city has, and not had your good luck. I think we have an individual with the city who could be that chief for a long time and be very, very good. I think if we don't give him time to develop in the position and give him the management help that he needs, he's doomed to fail. And I'm not sure six months is enough. But I would, I would try to do that, saying, let's, let's do that. So we will go after July 1, we'll have a new contract, hopefully. We have, I think we have good morale right now. We have good morale in the, in the police department. The reason that's important is they're the ones that talk to other officers in other places. And they're the ones can talk to their people saying, hey, Scappoose is a good place to work. Come on, come over here and give it a try. I think that's going to be vital. And so we do that, we may get some good applicants and we can build, rebuild this department. And when you consider the fact that we have three people out there now, only three people that can actually work, it's about as low as we can get. We've got to, we've got to, we've got to rebuild it. And so I think that we're on the right track with a decent contract that treats them good. I think they're going to go out and help us find some people. And if we do that, we, we, we have the lieutenant prepared to become chief in, in a length of time. I think we could be in good stead. So that's where we're at right now. Is, is there any problems with that plan?
We're going to have an executive session that discusses some of the topics that you brought up.
The only thing that, the only personnel you can discuss in executive session? Well, myself, the attorney and the judge. Yes.
Get on topic. I appreciate that. It will be interesting to see, you know, how, how, if we're able even to attract a sergeant now. Are they, when they're out there looking, are they asked, are they looking at the whole department and seeing how good you, you know, how strong are you? How, how well is it running before they start applying? Or there are sergeants out there all over the place looking for jobs, you know? I mean, I think any of them, they're worth their salt. I think by doing this, at least it's giving us a direction, a, a, a thing. You know, things obviously change, they always change. But at least what we've done in the past, what you've been doing for the last couple of months, doing this kind of at least would hopefully, because a sergeant's pretty much a lateral, right? Because they have to have work. Hopefully they'll say, wow, Scappoose looks like they're on the right track. There's opportunities. I like the leadership there now. I want to come and work.
I think if we have the, the, the succession plan in there, I think that, I think our lieutenant will be an attraction for people to come and apply here. I think he's, he's known in the county, he's, he's liked in the county. And I think you'll see some people want to apply, would like to work with him. At least that's my hope. And that, that's what I hear from different people.
Sorry, was that for a sergeant?
No, I'm.
Were you talking about?
Sergeants that will want to work for.
So I have a question. And the lieutenant now that we think would be a great chief, I would agree. What timeline, you said six months is not enough. What would be enough and what is it that he would exactly need that you fire in seven, eight? Is it a year? I mean, we're looking at.
Great question. It depends on how long we can, it'll take us to fill up these positions to give him support.
I, I think we're bordering on personnel issues here that are not appropriate for open session.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can maybe talk, it's about what, what is a chief's job? What do they need? What kind of training does it take to become a chief?
Exactly.
And I think they'd be happy to let you know at another time, just steps. Yeah, to me, what's different between a chief and a patrol officer versus a sergeant? I'm not real familiar with all the levels, but there is probably training and things that he needs to be able to do while not overseeing other officers, you know, and not being here and not being there.
We need to stop discussions about some personnel issues.
That's fine. Good? Any other updates?
Uh, no, that is it.
Great. Police department?
First, I want to apologize, you know my normal attire, but I'm going. First, uh, I want to apologize, you know my normal attire, um, but I'm going out on patrol this week with the guys, so, uh, that's the more laid back look, so no offense, I hope. Uh, and second, I would like to thank the council for the ALS proclamation today. My family has been touched by that disease, that terrible, terrible disease. So it personally, it, it means a lot, so thank you for that. I think, uh, uh, city manager hour has kind of gone over kind of where we're at right now, where we're, you know, hopefully going to be soon. Just a couple of quick other things. We are, uh, in the process of purchasing another patrol vehicle, which is exciting, trying to again, keep our fleet as up to date as possible. We're seeing a reduction in, uh, maintenance of our vehicles as we have updated our fleet, which is nice as, uh, I was here before and we were just hemorrhaging money in, uh, maintenance. So that is slowly cutting down, which is, was, is to be expected with, uh, newer vehicles. And also, uh, it, we are, we are just on, on a kind of a side note patrol wise, uh, we're, we're quickly identifying some deficiencies out there. Um, I, I saw it today a couple of times. And it's nice to see, uh, because we know how to fix it. So, um, I'm kind of inspired by being out there. I was out there last week for a little bit and then I've been out today, I'll be out all week and I'm just seeing some, uh, issues that, uh, are, one would expect to see from a, a new employee, new cop. But again, we don't have that experience, so we don't have other new, older, excuse me, more experienced, uh, cops out there with them to kind of show them the ropes. And, uh, again, I was out there, uh, the other day and today and I saw a pretty drastic need for that, um, with my own eyes. So it's like, okay, this is, this is a real thing and, uh, we can fix it. So we're, uh, aiming towards that. So, um, that's just kind of a personal exciting thing that I was able to, uh, identify and uh, we, we will be able to get that, uh, squared away. Other than that, I, I don't really have too much, you guys, any questions for me or concerns or ideas or anything?
I'll just give you my, I got a big thank you from Betty Johnson for officers last week out at her place. She just called and said they, it was amazing that what they did, everything they were looking for, they were very helpful, very polite, very courteous, and she wanted me to relay that, so.
I, I appreciate that and, and I'm, I'm not surprised to hear that. I mean, these, uh, the officers that you have are very personable, they're out there really providing a good, uh, community service type of service and, uh, that's just validation and I appreciate that, sir.
Great, great. Thank you. Uh, Council Bailey.
No updates on my end this time.
Thank you. Council Jacobs. You, Council LeFrenz.
Nothing tonight.
Council Holmes.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
You, Council Santiago.
Um, good, thank you.
You, Council President Miller.
I just have one thing, I brought this up previously, if there was any interest in the city trying to get a booth at the fair, um, this year. If, I don't know when that opens or if we're too late or what the timeline is for that, but I thought that'd be a great opportunity to, I don't know, create staffing, but I think, uh, some of the city councilors, I know, um, I would be interested in helping staff that. And we had, you know, obviously we get a ton of Scappus residents that go to the fair.
Third week of July-ish. See how much, yeah, how much time it would take and what would make it worth our while. Happy to help. Hey, thank you. Yes, we did get Scappus Outdoor Festival coming up, June 8th. It's really coming together, really want to thank JJ on that. Graduation, obviously, June 1st coming up. Want to thank all those girls, I saw state, some of the, they got second in state in Girls Track, which, um, one of my favorites, Peyton Lennox ran, got first in state in the 300 meters hurdles and just her second time ever running it. She ran it once at districts and once at state and won, so that was. Yes, yeah. Lennox's daughter, so that was pretty amazing. And just, you know, I, I wanted to kind of go over, I, I wanted to thank all the fellow councilors for taking time out of their busy lives to help guide the direction of the Scappus. We're unpaid volunteers that spend countless hours on a thankless job, trying to do what we feel is right and the best thing for the citizens, Scappus. None of us have an agenda or any personal to gain from the many hours, um, sometimes hard decisions that we make. I was expecting to see three people up remotely and, and, and two of them ended up coming in and Marissa's still there. We, we, we see them routinely being online, it's not because they don't want to be here, it's because they all have very real busy jobs and lives that, and, but they understand the value of the participation, helping out. So I really want to thank you guys for making your time to be here. We don't always see eye to eye and we don't all have the same beliefs, we're all, uh, from different backgrounds and experiences, which is good. We all want to have different perspectives on views, as long as we can communicate cordially and in a respectful manner, um, which I believe we do very well. We do have a very important decision coming up, is the hiring of our new city manager. And so the city manager is the CEO of our city and will help us, uh, lead us going forward. So hopefully we can all come together and select a great candidate for the job. And, um, if hopefully there's a couple of great candidates to choose from and we can come together in a respectful way and a positive way to select our new leader. So I just wanted to thank you guys, um, since I have all of you, um, here, appreciate it. We are going to, we are now going to go into executive session under ORS 1926602-1, employee evaluations. Okay, and, um, city Scappus will now mean executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of this session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room, but we are not planning on making any decisions or anything afterwards in open session. But we are now adjourned to executive session.
And we take a.
Yes, take a.